I think we're ready. Alrighty, it's 5:00 PM. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Alrighty, roll call has been taken. All members are present, so we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Barney, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, we have no delegations to here, we have no reports. So we'll move on to the consent agenda and start with the minutes. And do you have those in front of you?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 11th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 11th, 2023. Is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alrighty, so we'll move on to minutes of the work session from December 11th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of December 11th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the work session minutes from December 11th, 2023. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alrighty, next we'll move on to the open enrollment. And Dr. Benny, do you have anything that we need to know about open enrollment?
Just an attachment there with a student's name in Litt County, but these are kind of standard practice now. So we usually accept all those kids that apply for open enrollment.
Make a motion to approve the open enrollment as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment as provided by the superintendent. Is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alrighty, Kristi, we're to the treasurer's report.
First thing I have is government checks to be written. I can answer any questions if I have any. And then the second thing I have is budget transfers and supplements. I had two transfers this month. I had correction on junior Appalachian project, I changed the revenue code. And then on the federal special ed boot camp, I changed the project code. On supplements, we had four new grants this month. We got special ed grants, the top one, CTR, federal special ed preschool, and supply chain assistant, which is food service. Then I carried encumbrances over from 2023, which is all open POs from last year. So I did that for 2011, 12, 51, and 61, and 71. And then earmarks, which is remaining balances from last year, they carried forward from June 23. So I did those for all the funds, and then I reestablished project 61, or fund 61 and fund 71 for those amounts. Any questions on this?
Boy, that was a lot in a little bit of time right there.
Summary.
Yeah.
Do you have to change these project codes, like for each bit of federal money that comes down? Is that what that, is that a normal process? Okay, okay.
Make a motion to approve the schedule of checks and budget supplements and transfers as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the schedule of checks to be written, and the budget and supplements and transfers as presented by the treasurer. Is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Kristi.
Can I ask a quick question real quick? I'm sorry, this just came to me. Couple of teachers were asking, how come requisitions and PL forms were taking so long to come from the board office? There'd been some requisitions that had been in there over a month, and somebody, I'd been asked by a couple to see what was holding them up.
It depends on when we get them. I try to catch them as soon as I get them.
Okay.
And then, I mean, maybe with the holidays as well, because certain things.
Okay.
But we thought that getting them as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, so that will take us out of the consent agenda and move us into new business, and we'll start with policy 3120.12, which is areas subs and areas of critical need. Dr. Benny, do we have?
Those are the two policies that we've done several times in the past. This is a new policy that will be the Neola policy format. But we need to update who's critical need without letting folks that are actually subbing for us. They run out of days if they're not on this list, and it affects their retirement. So we need to put these out for reading for that purpose. And hopefully, we can get these out, they can be read, and they can become established policy. Then we submit those to the state, and the state then approves our substitutes in areas of critical need. So they don't have a lapse of employment where they don't, are not subbing for us, because we're short with subs anyways. So these were going to be, we kind of do this, we've done this before, we did this last year. This is an updated list, but this is a new policy. And through the Neola process, this is the actual Neola policies. They're in the 3,000s you can see. And they'll be going out for comment a little early.
Make a motion to place policy 3120 dot 12, subs in areas of critical need, out for review.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to place policy 3120.12, which is subs in areas of critical need, out for review. Is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alrighty, we will now move on to policy 4120.12, which is areas of critical needs for substitute bus operators. Dr. Benny?
The same, same thing except bus operators. We have to get this approved by the state, or it has to be in our policies. And these, we're going to include from, this is a 4100 from Neola. And of course, we need to have this done so we don't have a bus driver that loses time of employment because it would, because they're not considered in an area of critical need. You can only sub a certain amount of days, like 130-some days a year. So this would be the same, same exact situation. We want to get those out there so we don't have somebody that's sitting and not subbing for us.
Make a motion to approve placing policy 4120 dash 12 on review.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve policy 4120.12 to be placed on review for the public. Is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alrighty, we will move on to 2023 Clean School Bus Rebates Program. Dr. Benny?
This is a proposal, I think it could get controversial. I don't know how people stand on it, but we, I thought, had already had a discussion about applying for the Clean School Bus Rebates program. Now, this doesn't guarantee that we're going to buy an electric bus. It doesn't guarantee we're going to get one. This guarantees that we are actually going to submit the paperwork in order to get an electric bus. We have the opportunity to apply and receive two different types of electric buses. One's called the Nano and one's called the Beast. One of them is a small, kind of 20-passenger, one's a really large-capacity electric bus. These buses will add, the reason why we have considered doing this is because it's going to add an extreme amount to our fleet value. And the fleet value is what we get funding for every year for bus replacement cost. Every year, you have so many buses, there's an equation. So you got 10 buses, and every year, you get rid of a bus and you buy a bus. This can add a lot of fleet value, which in transportation funds would equal funding. And that funding would be basically funding that we would have to do things from, buy buses or diesel fuel or whatever that we wanted to buy with it. We would have to buy a charging station for these buses. That could incur $5,000 to $25,000 worth of cost. But that also is rebated, and we will get that money back in a year or two whenever we submit. That the charging stations would also be free for these buses. So our main goal was to increase our fleet value, which would increase the amount of dollars we get every year for electric, for buses, electric buses or diesel buses. So a lot of schools, I think there's 30, around 30 buses that they have available, and there's people that are applying for those. So this is a rebate program that would allow us to start the application. It's not the physical purchase. We would have to apply for those types of things.
What's the price range on the buses and percentage of?
The Nano is 200 and, I want to say 60,000. It's a very expensive bus. Our average bus is like 120,000. So the Beast is even more than that. So it adds hundreds of thousands of dollars to our fleet value.
And then what's the rebate? Is it, what percent or?
We get the buses for, is what I can understand for, for free.
We also, we get buses, though we have to give up buses. So if we get electric buses, we have to give up two gas buses as well.
We do have to give up buses every year. We, they have a, the accountability date, if you remember, that's one of the things that we, we needed to get rid of buses. We've sold two buses this year. So that is one thing that we go through every year.
Yeah, we normally buy a bus every year, so is this?
Buy a bus, get rid of a bus.
Would this be replacing the, this would be the only purchase for the year?
No, we would still get bus replacement costs. We would still be buying a bus. We usually buy a bus a year.
Right.
And, and there's enough money left over there that about every fourth to fifth year, we can buy two buses. The hopes is with our fleet value, this will put more of that extra money out there that we can replace more of our buses.
So this is not like we get this bus, but we have to give up two gas buses, right? This is just?
We're gonna, we're going to give up buses one way or the other. We're going to give up gas, but we give up, we're over in gas buses.
We have a surplus of buses.
We have a surplus of buses.
Right, which is normal rotation, correct?
Actually, we have a-
Because we use those, you know, if you have a breakdown in maintenance, we use those extra buses.
We do have a surplus of buses.
Yeah, but we, they are.
But we would have, in order to stay in the sweet spot with accountability, there would have to be some buses that be, that were sold. We sell those surpluses, those really old buses, and I, I asked Mr. Frazier, he said around $3,500 is what we get out of those buses.
So this today, is this just giving permission to look more into it?
We would be applying. I'm hopeful that if we applied, we would, we would, I'm not guaranteeing that we would get this, though. I don't know if we would.
Permission to speak?
Sure, go ahead.
To have the floor?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this is something that, guys, that I feel very strongly about, number one. And I, I'm actually not a pro to it. I think that we live right here in central West Virginia. Although I know there's a lot of new jobs being made in green energy right now, I don't, I don't think that that is the, the common, what funds the common household here in central West Virginia. I think that we have a lot of students that their, their families are, are, you know, that's how they get by is with, with natural resources, especially oil and gas here in central West Virginia. But however, that's not really much of a leg in itself to stand on to, to make an argument against electric buses. So with that, knowing that this was coming, I have done a little bit of plumin, uh, plumin, I can't even say the word. I've, I've done some research on this. And just to throw out some stuff, and this was actually, this was just last week. GOP Congressman Derek Van Orden, I don't know what state he's with, but he's on the House side, brought this, you know, was, was speaking on this. And pretty much, you know, he starts with, with a little fun fact, and he, he says that, and I don't know, I'll ask this question to you guys. 4.3%, 4.3% of all electric vehicle batteries are comprised of cobalt. 70% of the world's cobalt comes from the Democratic Republic of Congo. So, okay, that's fine, you know, 70% of it comes, 4.3% is in all batteries, not a big deal. But however, 15 to 30% of all those mines in the Democratic Republic of Congo are called artisan mines. What is an artisan mine? Well, I'll tell you what an artisan mine is. An artisan mine is thousands of children working and digging with their bare hands, the same as it's slave labor, slave labor is what it is. And, and the fact, the fact of the matter is, DC knows that that's what's funding their green deal is, is African slave labor. I mean, that's just, that's, that's what it is. And that's what's built on the back of it, and, and they don't care. So I do care. You know, I think anybody with a conscience would care that, you know, we're, we're, the whole thing behind these green buses is to, for better air quality for our kids, because they say the CO2 emissions riding on the school bus, they can't learn as well when they go into the classroom. So I mean, I mean, I want my, my kid and the kids in the district to be the best that they can be, but not on the brow or the sweat or the blood of the kid on the other side of the world. So that's kind of my argument against it. And also, you know, the cost of, of, of the buses and, and stuff like that, I know, is, is, is being subsidized. That's, that's the government, you know, actually funding what's going on over there. And, you know, there's some, some legislation that could change, just like with Blood Diamonds, they compare it to Blood Diamonds. They compare cobalt mining to Blood Diamonds. If you, if you've ever seen anything on that, just watch the movie Blood Diamond. Leonardo DiCaprio, you can get a pretty good grasp on it. But the other part of it is at DC, the, the Transit Committee, you know, this is all like dream, you know, envisioned up in DC, the whole green deal. They say that they're so far behind on production. We may get this, and all I'm saying is if we do get awarded this money, or we get awarded this bus, you know, is that bus actually sitting there? How long is it going to take to get that bus? There's a lot of variables. And then this is all still new technology. You know, they, they, they like to forecast that these buses are going to last 12 years, or they're going to last this long, or they're going to last that long, but we don't know. And I know that weather also plays in to battery life. And here, it does drop below that threshold for batteries. I, I can't leave a battery in my garage over winter because the cells are busted and it'll go bad. These are different batteries, and I understand that, but still, they have a threshold of temperature. And we, you know, that's something that's always fluctuating here in West Virginia. We're, we have four seasons. So there's just a lot of things to think about, but the main thing is cobalt batteries, EV vehicles are, are, are based from slave labor, and that's what, 4.3% of every battery has cobalt in it. And that's what you're looking at, so.
I, I don't know if it has cobalt in these batteries. I couldn't even speak to that.
4.3, hey, if, if somebody on the Transit, Transit Committee at DC, you know, says that's where I'm taking that information, but.
I, I will tell you that, you know, some of these exist in the state. There's about 30 of them that are going to be out there for all sorts of different counties. It doesn't, this is not something that, you know, I think Mr. Frazier and I have talked, this is not something that we have a strong stance on, but this money is available for us to do bus replacement. And if, if we don't get it somebody, it's going somewhere. I mean, that's, and that's up, it's up to you guys.
If people will lie for, maybe other people will be like, you know what, I don't want to fund slave labor just because, you know, the Democratic regime said that too either, so maybe they might turn it down as well.
Do we know anything about their efficiency, about, do they work here?
I can only speak for the, for the few, the few superintendents that I've talked to. They have, they have one, the same one that I have and that I'm requesting, I'm asking the Nano, the smaller one. And they have a, a charging station in Work County, and I've talked to their superintendent, and they say it works. They also had tested the Beast in Calhoun County.
You're talking about, about 10 to 20% a mile could be the difference between gas, diesel, and electric. It's going to be your difference.
So when I talked to Calhoun about it, they had tested it on multiple runs in Calhoun, and it, and it was fine in, in that district. I've talked, I've talked with both Kelly White soul and Michael Fitzwater.
Have they had time to see the savings, how much they're saving?
I, I didn't ask them about the savings of it. I just asked them if they-
They have in Mercer, and it's pretty significant.
I didn't ask them about if they had time to see what type of cost savings they would have as far as between diesel and, I just, my, what I was more concerned about, the Beast is really big and it's low to the ground. It's actually made for an urban area. And I was more worried about can it get into the places that we have.
I mean, that's kind of, I, I feel like, you know, I'm just pulling a yes or no out of the air, because I don't know anything about them. I mean, I don't know if they can, if they can work in our environment. I mean, I don't know how god awful it's going to be to put in a charging station, and what if something screws up with that?
My, my guess is, now, I will say with the charging station, I, I don't know about the power capabilities that are, our, our garage is not the most probably efficient place. We don't have a lot of places, in order to redo a, an electric fleet, we are not set up to redo an electric fleet. Our garage doesn't hardly have the place to park our current vehicles. It is very outdated. And the Beast, and this is another issue with the Beast that we have taken into consideration. The Beast won't fit into our, it actually will not fit into our garage.
What was the total cost? Is it the small bus again?
I, I have to, I don't have it off the top of my head.
265.
It's two, it was, it was well over $200,000.
So it's?
It was more than double the, of the other buses.
Yeah, double what a regular bus is.
It's a 20-passenger, too. When I say it's a small bus, it's not, it's, it's more like Miss West's feeding van size. That's what size it is. It's not very big, is what I'm saying. They called the Nano for a reason.
And so with that size limitation, is there a run in the county that would fit that, you know, had, to have enough students on it, I guess, just for that bus? Because I, to me, you're going to go out in those outlying areas all the way to Normantown and pick up 40 kids that now you can't even put on that bus.
There is not a, there is not a run in the county that that bus could handle all the kids. Even the Career Center run would have more kids. We'd have to have a larger bus than that. We'd have to take the Beast if we, if we took it, just, say we took it from the high school to the Career Center, we'd have to run the bigger one for that.
The mileage isn't a problem. The miles could do it. They get anywhere between 100 and 150 miles to, to a charge, two, three hours' charge. And then also, there, there's like a big, like, the charging is different, too, and I know this sounds crazy, but it's, it's kind of like using your cellphone at an arena or something. When everybody's trying to use your cellphone, sometimes it's hard to get off. It, it costs different amounts depending on the pool, the grid, of how much it costs to charge that bus during certain times of the day. And like, that's the big new thing with their chargers and what's that stuff. They're trying to make these smarter chargers so they charge at times where the grid's not being pulled on as much, so it's more economical.
The chargers are very expensive, and the smarter chargers, of course, the better charging technology. We do get a rebate. We would have to, we would have to fund the upfront cost of the chargers, which could be significant. But we would get, we would be able to apply and get the rebate for the chargers once we get the buses.
So bus comes before charger, be sitting idle for a while?
Well, it still sounds like the majority of the purpose of this is free bus that increases
The fleet value.
The fleet value.
But where does that go in the long run? Do we just always keep that bus, keep an electric bus that we're going to use very rarely, to a degree? I mean, unless they make an off-road version of it, so we can have a higher fleet. What, I mean, I understand that we can buy more diesel fuel, but what other value besides saying, oh, well, our, our fleet value went from, you know, let's say hypothetically speaking, a million dollars to now we're, you know, 1.4 million dollar fleet value. What, how does that?
Your bus replacement cost every year is based on your total fleet value.
But we get that bus regardless, and we already have a surplus of buses, so we're, like, how, once again, you know, are we going to buy another electric bus because we have that higher fleet value? Or I mean, is the ultimate goal to replace all of our diesel buses with electric buses? Or is it, you know, where, where does it go? Where does it stop?
Our ultimate goal was just to apply for the buses to test the buses and increase our fleet value.
Because they're getting to the point.
We, we, we did not have the, and I don't think our, like I said, with our bus garage, I don't think we would have the capacity to switch our fleet. We would have to probably invest into a new bus garage if we were going to do that with charge, with updated three-phase electricity and those types of things.
Like you said, the Beast won't even fit in our-
The Beast does not fit in our garage. I am sure that if, that, you know, one of the things is just a discussion, because I, for some reason, I thought we had a discussion about this. We'd mentioned this whenever they first, whenever they first came out. And I wanted to put it back because there was some, when we went to fill out the paperwork, there was some concern there, which is absolutely fine. I think that, you know, some of the, some of the questions that you have, I can get answers to. We, this, this, there's a deadline of the 31st of, I think, January on this application. So we're kind of coming up to a deadline. We could, we could, we can table-
It's going to be going for another six years.
But I'm sure that we can, I'm sure that-
I don't have strong
Yeah, I'm not particularly convinced either which way about it. Coal-powered bus or?
Yeah.
I mean, that's where the power comes from.
Yeah. In, in Mercer County, it's saving about $4,400 a year in maintenance cost and about $2,000 a year in fuel cost, if that's any kind of base. Again, it's new, and time's hot. This is where everybody's going.
It is new.
And I mean, you know.
We had a lot of questions.
Where are these buses made? Do you know where they're made at? What, like the brand?
I, I don't. I think, I think the one is a Thomas bus. I, I, I'm not too for sure. You know, most of our buses are Thomas buses.
I mean, on the surface-
We can hire local people to work on the buses, though, that we have here now. We would, they'd have to get, we'd have to train, get a train-
Absolutely. That, that is one of the, that was one of the concern, you know, we've got people locally that can work on buses. This would have to, this would be, that's been one of the concerns with our-
Taking the money.
Like I said, I don't know much about them, but I've heard horror stories about the cost of the battery replacements and do you lose all that maintenance?
Ask, ask the brick seller, how they like those electric-
That you've saved if you have to replace a battery. I, I don't know. I just, I don't know. I don't know how feasible that is.
I am going to say that this same program is supposed to run for six years, and just because we're not getting into the swing of it this year, we always have next year. That's, there is, there's almost a trillion dollars dedicated to this program.
I mean, on the surface, obviously, if we can for free get a bus that increases our fleet price and therefore increases our future reimbursements, it doesn't look too bad, but then there's hundreds of unanswered questions, so I don't know.
The larger thing that bothers me, but it's just the way it is, is just, you know, the government's always going to give you money to point you in a direction to do things.
Oh, the government would point you in a direction?
Well, I just mean, it's tax money, we could-
They would try to tell you, make, say your opinion?
You could have half the expense of the product, like we normally do, but, you know, now we'll buy something more than twice the expense that's smaller.
That, that is a fact. The Nano is very, it's very expensive for the size. I can promise that we would not buy this bus as a replacement.
Right, but obviously, things will get cheaper as time goes on.
So this was signed in in November 2021 and provides $5 billion in federal grants through 2026 to replace existing decent-powered school buses nationwide.
I think there was around 30 that the governor, this was one of Justice, he, of course, they applied and got the money, and then I think that he has around 30 that is up for this first application.
I think 1% of buses in the nation. So I know some other people have 1% of buses in the nation right now are electric.
So I would say, like, that bothers me a little bit about, you know, government waste in a sense, but it's a done deal, so you take it or not.
Yeah, contributes to slave labor.
Somebody's getting the 30 buses.
Any further discussion? Any action? I don't hear any motions, so I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item and start to, there's nothing, uh, discussion LSIC meetings, Dr. Many.
I'm just, this is something that I've been meaning to do and for some reason, I keep on dropping the ball on it. I, I, we need to decide where, if we're having our LSIC meetings at the school, if you guys like that model, if you don't like that model, if you want the schools to come here. But we need to get, um, the, the principals an update, you know, sometime in the spring, um, we need to get it on the schedule to have their LSIC meetings. So, um, you know, this place is set up very nice, um, the elementary seemed to be a good place, we kind of struggled sound system, we kind of got to have it in that, at the high school, it's kind of in that commons area, it's kind of hard. Um, but just kind of getting your guys' opinion so I can go ahead and get those scheduled. And then if we want to actually schedule them for an upcoming date soon, you know, I would think we need to give them a month or so, but to schedule those meetings.
Permission to speak freely?
Sure, go ahead.
I absolutely loved going to the schools last year. I think it was an eye-opener, walking through the high school and seeing the needs and, and, and I, I would like to, I'd like to go back this year and see the, what's been updated and check out the meet room.
Okay.
I mean, that's personally, my personal.
I tried, that was my opinion, Brett, was to go back to the schools, yes.
It's just, that, and that is totally fine. We just need to know, and we can get, we have a little setup that we can use out there too. It's not going to be as nice as this, but we can absolutely do that. So any time period you, you're thinking, like, um, maybe at the end of February, beginning of March?
When's our training is in February too? I think it's the seventh.
Did we just do it with a board meeting last time?
We did do it with a board meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have to do it with a board meeting?
It would be an additional meeting if you didn't. A lot easier to do it with a board meeting.
Lisa, do we know what the March board meeting dates are by chance?
March board meeting is the fifteenth, eleventh, and twenty-fifth. It doesn't matter, I mean, we're going to be here anyway, so whatever.
Eleven, twenty-fifth?
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I think give them a month, like you said, to kind of prepare, so that would put us, yeah, I mean, yeah, March, April, yeah, sure.
Can you tell them, I, 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 we don't, I mean, I leave this special stuff, I like walking around the school, that's, that's in itself.
And, and, and as far as that goes, just re, a data report like we normally get, and then, um, would you guys like to take a school tour? I know we haven't seen-
See improvements, what's changed?
We didn't actually walk through the elementary, so that'd be nice if, if we'd actually get to see it, the school tour event.
Sure.
Yep. All right, that's what we'll do. That's, and that's, I just needed to have a discussion about that, if everybody's good with that.
Okay, all right. There is no old business, so that'll take us into personnel, Dr. Many.
All right, now let, now slow down here, let me get my thing open up. I'm on a new system here, so, um, okay, there we go. Uh, professional, uh, recommend Karen McLean, social studies teacher, Gilmer County High School, Joanna Stansberry, expanded school mental health coordinator, uh, Lindsey Putnam, substitute teacher, Isaac Putnam, substitute teacher, Nikolai Soa, substitute teacher.
Make a motion to approve the personnel agenda, personnel? Professional, excuse me, not personal, professional.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the professional section of the personnel agenda, there is further discussion to that main motion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Okay, we'll move to service.
Service, we just have one, Brittany C., recommend special ed classroom transportation aide, Gilmer County Elementary School.
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation on the service portion of the personnel agenda, is there any further discussion to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Okay, we'll go to extracurricular.
Extracurricular, we've got Oki, Oki Starzak, head varsity wrestling coach, and Raven Friend, resignation after-school tutor, Gilmer County Elementary School, effective one eighth of twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel, uh, yeah, the personnel agenda as recommended by the superintendent, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Okay. All righty, so that goes to continuous improvement. I see Mrs. West with her, okay, you have some-
Yeah, she's got a presentation for us, so.
Come right ahead. Thank you.
It's a good data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have completed the I-Ready Benchmark, number two in grades kindergarten through twelfth grade. So as you turn to the first page there, just a reminder about the strategic plans. Uh, each school has a plan and then the county has a plan. I also included the image from Zoom WV, this is where our data ended at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The elementaries is based on their general summative results, the high school is based on, uh, growth with their I-Ready performance, and then the county strategic plan is based on general summative and our SAT scores. And then, as you go through the next several pages, what I've given you are the images of Benchmark One in reading for the county, and then you can see the breakdown by school at the bottom of the page. And then you can lay beside that, uh, Benchmark Two in reading, so you can kind of see the difference between proficiency between the two. If you look at the county line at the top, Gilmer County Benchmark One reading, the county proficiency was eighteen, it's green, and then if you look at Benchmark Two, that growth is twenty-five. Again, you can look at, at the growth per domain, you can look at, uh, per school. Again, as you begin drilling down into data, you can, you can go a lot of different directions with it. The next few pages breaks it down by school, so then you'll have the elementary reading one, and then you can look at elementary reading two, and the breakdown there is by grade level. Now, I do want to call out with kindergarten, you will not see any red because there is not a grade level below in the I-Ready system. We do have preschool, but, uh, in I-Ready, it begins with kindergarten. So again, if you're looking at numbers, and then the next two would be the reading Benchmark One for the high school, and you can compare that to the reading Benchmark Two for the high school in reading.
And, and the second benchmark is the reading two.
And here you can see by grade level, one to two. And then we start over with the math data. So in math, benchmark is a county, proficiency with number one was ten percent, and that has grown to twenty-one percent. And that's as a county. And then you can see by school, the growth, Benchmark One to Benchmark Two. And I have some of those numbers figured for you on a couple of other pages when we get there. But then, uh, once you look at the county two pages, then you have the two elementary pages, Benchmark One and Two, by grade level. And then you have the two math, Benchmark One and Two for the high school, grade six through twelve. Something I do want to call out on behalf of our juniors and seniors, and we did not realize this when we scheduled the dates for benchmarks, some of them were also taking college finals the same week that we gave this assessment. And, yeah, so that was something we noted. Deep dives, uh, we had our teachers in, starting last Tuesday through, our last group came this morning, all of our ELA and math teachers, kindergarten through twelfth grade, have been to the board office and we've taken time to meet with each of them. We've looked at this data with each of them. Leadership team meetings will be taking place next week with middle school, high school, and then also the elementary. So again, this is data that will be discussed and looked at and analyzed. Once you get beyond the data, you come to a page called data breakdown, and these are the numbers that I crunched for you, um, just to kind of give us some perspective. And this is based on, um, first to second. So as a county, reading from first to second, we went from eighteen to twenty-five, that was a seven percent growth. Math, from first to second, as a county, was eleven percent growth. Elementary, reading from first to second, nineteen to thirty-seven percent, so that's an eighteen percent growth in reading. And for the math at the elementary, there was a twenty-one percent growth. High school reading from first to second, uh, there wasn't growth. And then with math, from first to second, there was a seven percent growth. When you take that data and you go back to the strategic plans, where are we on track? So the elementary, again, is based on their GSA data, which is grades three through five. One of the reasons we went to the I-Ready platform is because it aligns much stronger with GSA, so it's a, it's a much greater predictor as to what our students will do. And so for the elementary, their goal is for thirty-five percent of their students in grades three through five to be proficient. They are currently at thirty-one percent. And from Benchmark One to Two, they had a growth of ten percent, so they're close to that ELA proficiency. Math, forty percent is their goal in grades three through five, they're currently at twenty-eight, and from the first to second, they had a growth of fourteen percent. So I see a lot of positives, a lot of plus signs on these pages, so. The high school, their goal is based on eighty percent student growth, so looking at the I-Ready. ELA, uh, they had a forty-nine percent growth, and that's grade six through twelve. Now, I do want to note, um, there was growth, even though they may still be below grade level. But if you go in and you look at those scale score numbers, there were students who went up a point, some went up two points, so there was growth. Um, in, in our grade levels at the high school, there was also growth on the math side, sixty-two percent of the students grew. Even though it shows that they are still below grade level, they, there was growth. So they're not at the eighty yet, but we're, we're moving in that direction. For the county strategic plan, that is based on grades three through eight for general summative and the SAT for eleventh grade, and so the goal for the county is to go from thirty-seven, which we actually ended last year with thirty-eight, but go from thirty-seven to forty-five. Currently, we've gone from nineteen to twenty-three as a county. And then on the math, uh, it's written from twenty-eight, we actually ended last school year twenty-nine point eight-two, we're to raise that to thirty-five percent as a county, we're currently at twenty. So continuous improvement steps, um, our elementary has, for many years, sent home data folders, and in the data folder, there's the report card, and then there are reports from whatever the, the assessment platform is that we're using for benchmarks, and so our middle school's going to do that. We need to communicate this data to parents, and so sixth through eighth grade will begin taking home a data folder, and then our high school students, ninth through twelve, they will also be given their I-Ready reports, and it will just be put with the report card envelopes.
Question.
Yes?
My, my wife does book bags, so I don't know, but I know the packet that you're talking about. Do parents sign that packet and send it back in?
There is a log page where parents sign, yes.
So that'll happen at the middle school too?
Yes, and they can make comments.
I think, yeah, to get that, to make sure parents are seeing it.
We, we have asked our school administrators to also make an all-call home so parents know those folders are coming. And then, um, we are working to contract a school improvement specialist, uh, in particular to work on what's called a focus walk. This is something that's been utilized in other counties, and then also to strengthen our academic calendar and make that kind of the center, and then everything else revolves around. So, and that will be, we'll share more about those details later, but those are a couple of steps we're taking.
When we broke down the data, it looked like almost through sixth grade that we were on track. And if you, if you go back and look at some of those, the elementary school, it seems like that they're on track to meet their school goal. They truly are through about sixth grade. The, the focus area is that area in the seventh, eighth, ninth grade area. You go back and look at the eleventh and twelfth grade data, like Mrs. West was saying, they probably didn't take this test seriously, it's not a reflection of what. And, uh, we've not given this test before to those students, um, so th, they're just now taking some of these things for the first time, we've got some date on that. We don't know if we'll continue to benchmark those twelfth grade students, because that pulls the rest of the data down, because, um, it looks like that, uh, the scores are a lot lower. The area of concern that we feel like, uh, a school improvement specialist, and I would like to ask you guys to contract with a school improvement specialist, to focus on those, you know, the middle school, developing things like positive behavior intervention support, working on the core curriculum, instructional strategies, um, those types of things, somebody that can go into the classroom, provide feedback to the teacher and help Mr. Payne, Mr. Hay, Haynes, um, really with that type of work. Also work with our district data team, one of the things that we've talked about is we have kind of picked the low-hanging fruit, we've been working on attendance, we've been doing all of these other things, but really making the focus academics, developing an academic calendar, um, putting out all sorts of different, um, academic-related messages, making sure that the teachers had the proper training, bringing in folks to facilitate diagnostics and things like that. We, I consider, with a slight change in the middle school scores, um, we can, we're pretty well, um, there through the elementary. We just got a couple of those grade levels and we have third through eighth testing, and our district test scores are made up of third through eighth grade, and we really need that seventh and eighth grade area, especially in the, in the ELA, that was what you saw that didn't have any growth whatsoever. That's really a focus area for us in that we, we would like to be able to contract with somebody, have them work in a day or two a week with those teachers, um, providing support for those teachers, um, figuring out what we're, you know, if it's, um, if it's discipline, let's, let's get, bring folks in and solve the, uh, build a PBIS program and those types of things. If it's communication, let's get folders and send them home to the parents and communicate every night. So we're, we are focusing on developing that process, and like I said, the, uh, the scores through about the sixth grade look pretty, pr, really pretty good on track, but we have that seven, eight, nine area that we, that we really need to focus on.
Uh, two items. The, one was, I, I did hear that, you know, that some of the benchmarking tests have coincided with like, you know, essentially, uh, you know, end of school or semester and it causes some, some stress on the students, so I think that could be reflected in there. And then the second question was, with the contracted services, is there any federal money or any additional funds for that sort of stuff?
We, we were talking about digging into the federal budget and try to find some federal money to do things, because that's providing support and, and it's, yes, there is, um, we haven't actually looked at the funding source, but that'll be probably federally funded.
I, I mean, I think academics, now that we have a lot of the kinks worked out of the new system over this last year, I think you're right, we need to absolutely focus on academics and, uh, do what we need to perpetuate the growth that we're already seeing. I think everybody's starting to come together and work towards that goal, and I think we need to promote and, um, incentivize and whatever we need to do to continue to see that, and all- And also, you, you have to keep in mind that, you know, the seventh, eighths through high school kids, we may not be able to go back and fix deficiencies from early in their careers. You know, you get to that education level by building blocks, you know, adding blocks as you go along. And some of these kids may not have developed those building blocks as they go along. So, you know, that's going to be a real challenge, taking, say, a tenth grader and trying to identify where along the way they didn't get those building blocks and trying to fix that in the limited time we have left. But, I mean, I keep that in mind when looking at the scores in the high school, too, is that we can't just snap our fingers and fix deficiencies that were encountered years ago. So, but I, I mean, I'm pleased to see the growth, and I'm anxious to see a lot more.
I concur.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, so we will now move into the superintendent's update. Dr. Manning.
I just wanted to, to follow up on that a- and, and talk about my new focus, and it is going to be academics. I think that, uh, we, in the Colts meeting, I laid out to the central office leadership team that it's time to move on to an academic focus and be, um, kind of, um, aware of what our goals is. Starting to make sure that those goals end up on every agenda in front of everybody when we talk about those types of things, whether it's, you know, um, on track to graduate, which we are meeting, and whether it's attendance, which we are meeting. And we had several things there, four or five things that, in our accountability data that we were in the red, that we're going to wipe out. That's the main, that is our main focus. That's the main focus for our students, of where we have to improve. We have to get our academic achievement right. So, we, I, I have, um, talked with several different folks around the state and, and trying to put together a model that we focus on, which will, um, start with just planning, scheduling out our meetings, making sure we have plenty of time to, you know, talk about those things. Making sure that we, as a board, talk about where our students are at and what they need and, um, you know, laying out the data and, 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 and working on it as a group together of stakeholders that say, hey, um, are we going to meet our goal? No, we're not going to meet our goal. Let's go back and try to fix this one area. We, we sh- we have the ability to meet our, all of our goals right now that we set in our strategic plan. But it's going to take significant growth from a, a few grade levels to make that happen. Now, we set our, we set our goals really high. We had eight, nine percent growth in a couple of those areas. But we set them high on purpose. I, I'm very proud of where the elementary school, um, has attained their, their growth. I, they are on track to meet their goals and our goals. Um, we, we have to provide some support, um, at the high school level and middle school level. And, um, I think that we're all willing to do that and provide, you know, any type of support that we can to help that, although they are growing. You know, there is lots of really high data points there that, that I've looked at in the last few days that I thought, oh, wow, you know, they really did have some growth. But we can, we can go back also in the, in years to come. They're going to be getting higher-level groups, um, every year. And that's evident with this year's, um, sixth grade group. So all of those things are positives. But I think th- as far as an update today, that's one of the, the shifts that I'm shifting towards myself is focusing primarily on academics. Because that needle has to move. And it, the only way, it's like working on anything. The only way you move it is just constantly working on it. And, um, so that's going to be one of my focuses moving forward. You all tested out the new, um, Board Docs setup tonight. I learned as well on it tonight. I will try to have the memos, uh, out to you on Friday, all of the agenda and stuff out on Friday and uploaded. I was sending a email for, for that before, but it will just be... Everybody should know just to log on the Board Docs and check it out, or bring it up on your phone or whatever, and you can see it. There will no longer be a email attachment, an email that goes out. It'll just be on Board Docs.
Can you still eat? I just like the communication, you know, getting, letting me know, hey, the agenda's posted.
Now, there-
Because then that reminds me that we have a meeting and-
The, the, I will still put out a bulletin, um, every week.
Okay, the bulletin.
The bulletin's still there, and I can include that, hey, we got the, uh, agenda posted on Board Docs and so on. But you won't get another separate email that would have the memo agenda and everything on it.
All the attachments?
Yeah, the attachments. No, 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 no. No, the bulletin, the bulletin is still there. You just wouldn't get that additional second email with those attachments on there, because they're on here. So when, I, I can give you a little prompt that says, on, on those weeks on the bulletin, it says, hey, the bulletin's posted, or the, the agenda's posted to Board Docs, log in and look over the materials.
Could you also add, and I, I think, I thought it was the last meeting, but can you add the blue?
It's on there, yeah.
It's not on mine, like, on my, like, where?
Are you logged in? Because I wasn't.
Oh, I mean, I'm on Board Doc, so I assume I'm... Oh, really?
Yeah, you might be on the public site, and we had, that's one little snack. Yeah, like, see, see on mine? Well, I'll check that after the meeting. I'll check that after the- Yeah, see mine?
Yeah, I saw. That's what made me say it.
Yeah, so we'll check that and get that figured. Does anybody else have any problems with it? I want to check before the next meeting, because it is a little different, because I was, I was having a panic today when I was asking Lisa. I don't have a, a packet. It's, it's, it's a little different. But I think it'll, I think it'll work good after we, it's going to cut down on a lot of paper. Now, anytime that you want to search something, all you got to do is go to Board Docs and type that in, and it's all searchable now. So to go back and find something with you, instead of trying to sift through papers, um, it'll just be there. You just log in and, and, and put the key, keyword in, and it's there. So that's all that I have. I, 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 I think that, um, like I said, appreciate your, your, um, willingness to move into this arena. It's a little bit difficult when you're making a transition to paperless, so.
All righty, that'll move us into board member comments, and we'll start with Mr. Chapman.
Uh, I, I would just, you know, like to tell all the board members to do your own research when it comes to electric buses and how the batteries are made and cobalt, because, I mean, if, like I say, just know what you're supporting. There's a lot of things, as Americans, that are shoved down our faces and our throats by our government. That is one of the reasons why I wanted to join this board, uh, was to, was to help hinder that from happening to our kids in our district. And I, you know, I just think you need to inform yourself.
Dr. Miller?
I've already given my soliloquy on academics, so.
Dr. Barner?
Nope.
Dr., Mr. Freshir?
No.
I don't have anything either. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All right, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, do you have one of those, uh, calendars with, like, words of the day?